I will now open the meeting for the Ashland Planning Board on August 24th, 2023 at 7:20 PM. And we are all here, other than Tricia, so today I will chair tonight, and we will begin with the Clerk's report.
Madam Chair and Board members, we have received one communication since the last Planning Board meeting. That was actually from an applicant, so I assume that our town planner will take care of a response to that. And that is it.
Thank you, Kate. And now we're going to move to our public comment. A brief introduction, the Planning Board for several months, several meetings now has had a public comment. It's at the start of our meetings. The purpose of this public comment is to allow members of our community to come and speak about general items relating to planning. If your comment relates to a project that's on the agenda or an item on the agenda, we do ask that you wait unless there's something preventing you from doing that. And do we have any public comment?
I could see that there's one person with their hand raised, Mr. Mark DeSoni. If I could, can I please ask Mr. Mark DeSoni to unmute himself and introduce his name and address?
Okay, thank you. Good evening all. It's not really much of a thought on my side, but it's just thank in time to have David to talk and get on with the public comments. I'm feeling this board is going to be more transparent with what they have been doing. And I'm not going to ask the last three, who wants to talk about what the goals are, I'm not going to ask that tonight. But as I'm saying, thank you for the citizens' participation and anything that I can co-walinate with and talk to with anybody that want to ask my experience of what I've been doing. I would like to join in on any subject that can be talked on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And is there any other public comment? And it does not appear to be any other public comment, Peter, am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay. And with that, we will move to the next item in our agenda, which is our discussion with the Sustainability Committee regarding the development of a new tree bylaw. And as I understand, Margie is going to present on behalf of the Sustainability Committee, is that right, Peter?
That's correct. And tonight we have, we have Margie, but we also have a few other members. So I think it'd be appropriate just to let Margie introduce her committee members and to go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you. Go ahead, Margie.
Sure. So Chuck, let's just join in. He is the Vice Chair. Our Chair Ash is away at this time. And then we have Matt Marsquas and Cara Holm, who you can't see, but they're here. And myself.
Wonderful. And Margie, do you want to tell us a little bit about the background of this particular bylaw and how we got here and what you hope to accomplish tonight with us? So that we have, the Planning Board knows how we can help.
Okay, so I have given you two documents. One was last week, and it's sort of a summary of what's in the bylaw. And I can't pull them up on my screen, so I'm going to have to go for memory on that. And then one I gave you this week, that's more of an outline that I thought could guide our discussion tonight. So do you want me to try to remember off the top of my head what was in that other document? Or do you have questions about it?
So what I would suggest, I know, Peter, you sent to the Planning Board a one-page document, I believe today, with the amended agenda. That sounds like the kind of shorter pinpoint version. Is that something, Peter, we can put up on the screen? And maybe, Margie, you could walk us through it and then the Planning Board could ask questions as a starting point?
Yeah, sounds good.
Just hold on a second, I was going to grab it. Please bear with me. Margie, that's what you sent over today, right?
No, the that, I have that one right in front of me.
And Peter, the document that was
more towards where we're going to go going forward.
It's called an outline on the email, Peter, if you, it was an attachment.
It begins with, "The Sustainability Committee strongly supports a tree bylaw."
Yep, I have it. I'm opening it up.
That's not the one from last week.
But that's one from this week.
Happy to address that one.
Margie, do you want to start with this one that we got today, the one pager? And then we can move to the prior document, which I believe is a little bit longer and might be a little bit more layered.
Okay.
Or how do you want to proceed? Whatever is easier for you guys? If you and Matt have a particular approach, you want to take us through? I think what would help the Board is to hear about what you're trying to accomplish with the tree bylaw and what some of your challenges are, if you will, that we can offer input on.
Good with that. Okay, so this kind of summarizes that, starting with what we hope to accomplish. And so I think it's, maybe doesn't need to be said, but this tree bylaw is important to us as part of the Net Zero Plan, which is why we keep pursuing it. And so I outlined four things that I think are where we're trying to get to, so I'll read them to you. We want to preserve and protect this valuable resource that sequesters and stores carbon, but also provides, the whole ecosystem comprised of trees and other parts of the community provide essential services to humans. We want to prevent the loss of this, especially due to clearcutting of property. We would like to use trees to help us lessen the destructive effects that are caused by climate change, such as flooding and heat islands. And we would like to encompass the community in this process of protecting our natural resources.
And then as far as applicability, it sounds like you're kind of narrowing it on larger commercial type of development rather than residential property?
Yes, that is correct. So from the beginning, the bylaw has excluded homeowners' private property and has focused on larger developments. And it specifically names the types of permits that would trigger the bylaw. So site alteration special permit, help me out here, Peter, forget.
You were talking about site alteration special permit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So essentially, is it, is it only applicable to the kinds of hearings, if you will, before the Planning Board that are not private residential property owners?
Exactly. So there's something in there referring to subdivisions and yeah, but what, exactly right, that everything that would go before the Planning Board, but not not a private homeowner.
I have a question about that, that wondering why the private property was left out? Like how, kind of what was your consensus or study about that? I did look up, like Concord, is that another? What, it seems reasonable, right? It's not that you decide to cut down a tree for whatever reason. It's, it's also related to if you're expanding your property, your footprint of your house, or you want a garage. And again, it's defined at what size tree and how that works. So I'm wondering how you guys came about to exclude private, a homeowner versus a developer?
Okay, so we discussed that from the very beginning, which was, I don't know, maybe four years ago. And we decided that at least at this point in time, we would exclude private property because, mainly because we felt that it would be very hard to pass a bylaw. Because, and we've gotten this feedback when we've been talking to people, it's going to apply to my property. And if so, I can't support it.
Okay.
So it's all, I guess it's like, I think that has to be kind of flushed out more because it's always private property. I mean, it can apply for the town as well, but you're not, I guess, to make it clear, you are applying this to private property and town property, just not a individual homeowner. Is that correct? Or are you only applying, intending to be public property?
No, it's not limited to public. So when a developer is going to put up apartments on a lot, that it would apply. Apply for one of those permits.
So essentially, it is applicable to multifamily housing, commercial space?
Yes.
Or public property? Would it apply to like a public school?
I don't think so, because they would not apply for a permit, would they?
They do. They do apply for a permit. So
You have to give me a break here, because I don't understand those terms.
That's okay. Not a big deal. So I, this is one of the benefits of this kind of meeting, right? We can kind of flush some of those things out. And so what I, what I'm thinking is maybe, I mean, I can take some notes of some of these topics that are coming up so that we can come back to these, right? So like what I'm hearing is the scope of this bylaw, like the applicability of it. We, we're going to have to flush out who it applies to and whether it applies to public development, only private development, and what kind of private development. So it sounds like right now, what I'm hearing is that it's being presented to us as private development, multifamily housing type of document. And we just need to flush out as a Planning Board and as a community what that means and whether that's appropriate. I am curious, Peter, if in general, from your experience in planning, whether communities are allowed to create bylaws that only address private versus public space? Like can the bylaw be very clear that this does not apply to public projects? Are we allowed to kind of narrow ourselves in a bylaw just to private space?
I think you can grant, I think we'd have to double check on this. I think you can grant yourself or you can give the, give an out for municipal projects, right? To give exemptions. You know, I think just to add into what Margie was kind of saying, I think, you know, going back to when the bylaw was first discussed four years ago, pre-COVID, the idea was to have this applied to subdivisions, but also projects for, you know, commercial development, mixed-use development. And then, and then down the line, right? That projects that were already, would be triggered under the site plan review and/or special permit within the bylaw, but this would not pertain to residential development. Kate is correct, though, as you see other towns, if you're starting to compare other towns and researching other communities, tree bylaws do reach into residential, a typical, which is your typical residential development, housing structures, especially when, number one, it's a tear down and somebody comes in and knocks down a house, proposes to build a bigger house and/or someone proposes, you know, addition greater than, I would say, 50% of the existing house. And so there are elements that I've seen across New England, across Eastern Mass, where tree bylaws are growing in popularity and where they would do require, you know, planting plans or replanting into a payment, if you will. But I know that was a broad brush answer to that small question, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's really, really helpful. It sounds like this bylaw right now may be a little bit less aggressive than other communities by kind of exempting or not applying to individual private landowners. And it also sounds like we might be able to exempt public development if we so choose. So now that we kind of, go ahead, sorry.
I would, I would consider that as a waiver that we would have to go through, kind of a waiver process. But that's, that's what I, that'd be the best. I think that's the best element, that's the best tool to think about right now for municipal planning.
And Margie, do you or anyone on the Sustainability Committee want to comment on these points before we start to kind of discuss the rest of these topics?
I will. So what, what Kate mentioned is correct. So places like Wellesley apply to public shade trees and also to private residential property. And the same, Cambridge applies to residential construction and demolition. Newton is special permit and a building of 25,000 square feet or more. Somerville is public shade trees and private property. And then there are other bylaws that, a lot of them are just public shade tree, which is a little surprising to me, since we have a state law that does that, that they can add to it, to tailor it to their own situation. So yeah, there are a variety of types and ours is a bit different that way. It's what I think the consensus of the original group that formed thought was appropriate here. And I guess I should emphasize that one of our main goals is to stop clearcutting of lots.
Thank you, Margie. So it sounds like the purpose of this, at least for Ashland, is not so much to limit development on a small private landowner scale, but more of the clearcutting that has been a concern.
Yes, that's true. If, if we want to revisit that, we can revisit it.
So my suggestion for the Planning Board and the Sustainability Committee is we could now, in front of us, we have these topics, like the definition of a protected tree, replacement requirements. And we could spend, I would say, a long time discussing all of these things in depth. And I don't know how much time we have tonight to do all of that. And so what I thought we would do is have Margie kind of walk through some of these things for us altogether. And then we can see which topics really jump out to the Planning Board as controversial or requiring a deep dive tonight. How does that sound to the Planning Board?
I, well, if I, if I can make a comment, I, I think that'll be fine with me. I, I think before we get into those more detailed explorations that this group did, can we address these bigger picture items first? And maybe, Steve, we are on the same page?
Like the items we've already
I, I just want to clarify that this list of topics is there for us to discuss over the course of the next few months.
Thank you so much.
Laying them out there for now. But I should say that I have made peace with the postponement of this bylaw to spring town meeting, because I think that the Planning Board and Sustainability have a lot of things to discuss and work out. And especially because we need to have a really thorough public process. And, and there isn't time. I'm, I'm accepting that now. So yeah, this is a list of things that we can spend the next, really until, probably until March.
Wonderful. In that case, my suggestion would be that maybe we can, through Marcelo's input, we can identify some of the big picture ticket items. Just identify them, throw them kind of on the board, if you will, and then come up with a work plan together to address these multiple points. How does that sound as a realistic goal for the meeting? Does that sound good, Deepa, Kate?
I agree with that. I would like to leave here with, like, probably specific, I know sometimes our schedule shifts a little, but like, specific topics and dates, because I do not, I don't want to take our foot off the gas. I think Ash expressed that, Sustainability Committee. And I think this, the Planning Board can offer that kind of support, that we regularly have it on our meetings to get through these topics. And I, I think Marcelo suggested, and I agree, when these are live talked with the public, that's part of the public exposure. I don't think it's good enough. But I think it's getting this regularly in front of the public. So yes, with please dates, topics through March 24.
Okay. And so Marcelo, Deepa, you're kind of nodding yes. Does that plan sound good to you?
Yeah, I think this, this list that you're seeing in front, it's a kind of covers all the big topics. But I think we need to set the foundation first before going deep into some of these topics, because these topics can take different forms in different scenarios. So I think we should set the foundation right first to make sure that what kind of projects are we attacking? Are we kind of pigeonholing ourselves into one particular type, category versus like looking at the big picture? And I think some of these questions, if you go through this list, like for example, I think it is Watertown, for example, recently came up where they are allowing residents to, if they're willing to plant a tree in their kind of property, they are, they can reach out asking for that. So I think there's a lot of, these categories can apply for a lot of those private owners as well, big or small. And I think we should give, make sure that that opportunity is set when we're trying to look at this bylaw before just talking about one aspect of this.
Thank you, Deepa. And Marcelo, you had mentioned some big ticket items. Are these the ones you were referencing? Did we miss one?
No, no, we, I, I don't, I don't think we, we missed one. I think, I think this, this, this document is, is a great start. I was referring more of what was just discussed, in a sense of the big picture. And Margie was telling us, you know, this is the, the objective, the, the objective is to, to achieve these, these big picture goals. And, and here, the bullet list is, is, is a good start of, of items that, that would be part of it. I, I just, I, I think before we kind of bypass it and just saying, oh yeah, this would apply to residential owner. I, I think that's one of the critical parts that I, I would hope that we, that we all can discuss a little bit more and see if we are kind of on the same page. And I'm just going to mention what came to my mind as, as I listened to Margie and Joanna at the beginning. So the, the, in principle, I think, and I agree with Margie, that, that I think they are trying to, to, to adjust this to tailor, to, to make sure that that is something that is well-received by the community and it favors the community. Not everybody's going to be on board for it or for everything on it, but, but at least something that, that, that is in favor for the majority and, and, and it can pass. So I think that's a good objective. Now, when we started looking into that and we start saying, okay, it would apply to, 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 to just this or that, I think that's critical, because, for example, I, I would, I, I, for, for several meetings have stated that there's no way that, that, that a town should pass a bylaw that, that impacts, you know, private developments or, or even residential lots. And not set the municipal projects as an example. Excluding the, the town, to me, is philosophically unacceptable. I think the town should actually lead on that. And, and we've talked about that, maybe help the town to see if there's going to be a fund, which I think is part of one of these bullet list points. But the, the town should not be excluded from this. And I think setting that stage would be more amenable for people to accept it and to accept the value of it. Overall, I think it makes sense what Margie said. I mean, commercial properties, that, that there's some requirements, especially if they go for, for special permit. That, that makes a lot of sense to me. The residential part, there could be gradations. I think it shouldn't be like onerous in a way that is, that is, that is unreasonable. I think there could be a, a type of exchange when somebody wants to add a garage, like, like, like somebody said, that some type of replacement that is, that is a little less stringent than what a commercial project would, would face, or the town. And lastly, I, the idea of clearcutting, I totally understand that, because I hate it when that happens. And in general, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about this possibility. But I think clearcutting, and Margie, I think you said that it's one of the key objectives of this effort. And I am, I, I'm a little doubtful of what the percentage of the problem in Ashland is clearcutting. My understanding is that there's not a whole lot of open land that would be clearcut for development in Ashland. So even though I think it should be part of it, because I think it's important, I don't think it's going to be the majority of, of the applicability of these bylaws. I think the majority is going to be what happens on large developments and, and quite frankly, on residential properties, because that's the majority of Ashland. So those are just general thoughts on, to, to see if we could discuss it and narrow to understand how global the, the, the orbit of these bylaw really wants to be. And that, that's, that's what crossed my mind.
Okay, so while you were talking, Marcelo, and you mentioned the importance of applying it to public areas, essentially as a matter of leadership, both Deep and Kate, you were nodding yes. Is that something that you both agree with? I just want to see where there's consensus with the Planning Board on that issue.
Absolutely. I think that was a good point. I think as a town, we should set the example for people coming into the town to make sure we should, we should be the leaders and set that example before expecting somebody else from outside to come and do it.
And Kate, you, you give a thumbs up. Do you want to add something?
No, I, I concur. I think it absolutely should be supported by the town.
Sustainability folks, are you, are you in consensus of that? Are you comfortable with, with expanding this bylaw to cover public space?
It was, actually, it was always my impression that, that the town would, it would apply. And, and I think that was the point of contention in the last go around, because there were two municipal properties in the works.
Okay, so it sounds like there's some consensus with folks here that we can move on to other items. And Marcelo's point seems like a good point to start a discussion on, which is, what is clearcutting? What's the definition? And is that really what we have left? In other words, how many properties truly at this point are left for the potential of clearcutting? And if there's not much, are we focused on the right thing? I think, is that what you're, did I summarize that correctly, Marcelo?
Yeah, that's exactly the point. I, I want to make sure, maybe it is a big part of the problem. I, I'm not convinced it is, but just, it would be great to, to put all the energy on, on whatever is going to have the biggest impact.
So then my question for the Sustainability folks, hopefully you've been a little bit closer to this issue and you've worked on this for a little while. Do you have any data or knowledge that you can share with us as far as kind of the status quo of properties in Ashland that are kind of left for potential clearcutting? Or, you know, how do you define it? You know, has there been an analysis done of what we're, what are we dealing with here in Ashland?
I'll start. My understanding is that there are limited lots that are, that are still undeveloped, but they, they do exist. So and some of them are sort of in the works, but might take as examples. So the property up by the train station that is in in, in the courts right now is heavily wooded property. So clearcutting could certainly apply there. And there's the property at 501 Pond Street that was cleared. Sitting there, not, and granted, it wasn't heavily wooded, but there, there was vegetation and trees that is no longer there. Now it's just a swamp, for lack of a better word. So I, I personally think that it is relevant. Does anyone else from the committee want to jump in?
I'll say, I think in one breath, there, it does seem like there's not a lot of big parcels left in town, but I think that's deceiving. I want to say there's been properties on Oregon Road and Oak Street. I know that the town forest has, there's properties of budding it that are large parcels. And when I say large parcels, I mean over two acres. And once you start counting them, it's significant because of the value that each forested acre provides. So I, I do think that this is overall worth it. Otherwise, Margie and I and Matt and the rest of the committee wouldn't have been spending our time trying to make something that will stick. So yeah, there, there are a significant amount of properties. Yeah.
I, I can think I can add to that, because I do live on Oregon Road and I know the property owner who has been fighting off developers who want to clearcut and put up a bunch of houses. I, you know, greatly sympathize with her, but we don't, but you know, if we had a mechanism where we were protecting the large majority of the area that she Mechanism where we were protecting the large majority of the area that she, um. It's trying to protect. I keep trying to tell, persuade her that she should just donate it to the town forest, but. Because it does abut the town forest, but so far she's not proposing to do that.
So could I ask kind of an ignorant, ignorant question? Um, and maybe Marcelo and Deepa can jump in too with their experience. Like, what I'm imagining is a certain sizable lot is needed. For a developer to come in and build. You know, multi-family housing, right? And so if you have a very small lot, it's challenging to do that. Um, what would be kind of, can we agree, what is sort of the minimum size that's needed for. Multi-housing development? Like, how do we define it? Is it, is it? Five units? Is it ten units? Like, what is the size? And I think once we define that as a group and understand it. We can have an easier conversation about how many of those lots are out there in Ashland that have enough trees that there could be quote unquote. Clear cutting. Is that a helpful exercise? Because I honestly don't know what the answer is to that.
So I have another way to look at it, though. If we're trying to protect trees. Like, can we craft it around, like, sometimes there's a small amount of trees and sometimes there's a bigger amount. Like, I'm having a hard time seeing how. If a half acre lot in my neighborhood got clear cut. How it matters if it's a five acre somewhere else. Like, it's still got clear cut. It has those big impacts. In fact, that it happened in my neighborhood. It was a wildlife corridor. Right? In a dense neighborhood, but it was and it got, so. I, I, I'm not quite sure. How it matters, I guess, except protecting the trees.
Well, I, I, I would say just to, to address Anna's question first, I think, um, it is, it's, it's tough to, to answer it because every. By definition, when you develop a project, every project is unique. Because every lot is unique on orientation, on access, on utilities, et cetera. Typically, I think the building code, uh, considers. I think four units or more are commercial building or there's, there's, there's a volume or a square footage. After which is, is, is considered a commercial building and the commercial building code applies. Um, I, I, I think the, 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 the challenge that I see. Because I think, I, I, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of a problem, a, a lot of an issue with people agreeing with it, with the, the overall intent of. Of what we're doing here. Where, where things get a little dicey is, um, addressing Kate's comment. Let's, let's pretend that that example takes place. If the zoning by law. On a district allows that lot that, that, that Kate was referring to. To develop a certain percent, a certain FAR, because that's what the law says. Then, and, and we all want to save trees or, uh, and I wouldn't say maybe. You don't have to get into, into a closed position where you just save that tree or sometimes. Properly replace it with more trees, which is better than save one. Uh, in some, in some, in some cases, you, you have to take some trees down. Unless there's cer- certain value of the tree. Uh, but how, how is this bylaw going to compete with the zoning where. The, the owner of a property has the right to develop a certain FAR. Uh, and, and now this other bylaw is gonna say, oh yes, but you don't. Because we have to save these trees. So it is, it, I, I think that's the, the, the difficult part of it. Uh, I think you, 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 it's, it's, it's easy to address, I think, how trees should be replaced. On a certain type of or size of development. Uh, how do you treat the, the open space in? The lot or, I guess, quite frankly, may, may, then, then you would have to amend the zoning by law to, to provide. Certain portion of every lot of a certain size to be basically, uh, um. Uh, 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 allowed almost like an isment for, 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 for green, um, for, for tree planting or something like that. So. It's, it's a little tricky that way in my, in my head.
Go, go ahead. Sorry, is that Cara talking?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. We, um, Margie, Matt and I, um, have talked a lot about. Um, and this goes on to, you know, how do you measure? Um, either or quantify the trees and their value on the property. We've gone. Kind of back and forth a little bit about whether to do this based on tree canopy or to, um, count individual trees by DBH. And, um, that, and we ran into, you know, how would we want this apply to. A lot that is in the center of Ashland versus, you know, a property abutting the forest. So we've, we've talked about it. It, it. This is not an easy, uh, an easy endeavor, um, but we have given consideration to both. Um, how do you make this something that applies to both types of properties?
And so how, 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 how do you guys do that? Just, just to, if you can explain a little bit more, are, 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 are you thinking that? This bylaw would have some type of, of map where some districts in that map have a different gradient of. Of enforceability than others?
So I think, um, our current, uh, struggle with that was we were starting to like the idea of. Doing it more by tree canopy, um, and using different tools, whether it be, um. I think it's iTree is, uh, is a mapping tool that, you know, kind of gives a percentage of tree canopy coverage. We kind of found it to be a little bit inaccurate, um, but. You know, we had tossed out the idea of like, would a lower percentage be more acceptable? Within downtown, you know, and that would be based on like zoning or whatnot versus a higher percentage required and. You know, uh, more forested. Um, or maybe do we make it, you know, measure what the canopy coverage is. Prior to construction and then try and match it. So. That wouldn't actually be overall improving our tree coverage, um. But it would be at least maintaining it. So these were ideas we. Have talked about. We haven't settled on anything. One of the things that, um. Came into play when we talked to, uh, Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, was she was not a huge fan of measuring. By the tree canopy coverage. And Margie had more of the conversation. With Becca on that. I wasn't there for that meeting, but, um. The overall, just from what I got, Margie, was that. It would be difficult to measure by tree canopy coverage. And therefore harder to enforce and. Yeah. Margie, do I have it right? Have it right? I think.
Yes, that, that is a good summary. Um, but I'm wanting to go back to the beginning. And, and the application, um, because it's suddenly seeming even more complicated than I thought it was originally. And I'm. Hoping that the planning board can help with this. So we were advised in the very beginning. About the, the specific types of permits that would be appropriate for this bylaw. And I just had to kind of go on faith. Because as I said before, I don't know the ins and outs of, of, of the permitting process and the various types. So this whole discussion is just calling into question exactly where we want it to apply. And I'm not quite sure. How to move forward to resolve that.
So I, I, I've been listening to all this and I'm trying to categorize kind of the concerns and. Listening to Marcelo and then Cara and Margie, Marcelo's point, the first point he made, correct me if I'm wrong, Marcelo, is a concern over. The ability of private landowners to develop and how, on a small scale, small tiny pieces of land. Not massive ones, but smaller, you know, something that might be. Four units were in that vicinity and the ability to kind of prevent private development. And where that line is. And so I kind of heard that as a concern. Um, and I do think that one way to address that might be, it's not like we're gonna prevent. The removal of every tree. We're gonna try to define what can or cannot be removed. And then we're gonna create. Incentives to prevent removal and perhaps a tree fund so that if you have to remove for development. There's a mechanism for replanting elsewhere. I'm assuming. We're not gonna prevent development. We're gonna allow development, allow tree removal under specific circumstances. That's kind of. A very quick solution I had, if you will. I think there's a way to allow development without. Saying, no, you can't develop here because this tree is too pretty, right? Yes, you're a private developer. You can cut this tree. But because it's a certain size, you're gonna have to do certain things.
Yeah, I, 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 I like the way you, you just, just put it. I think you were very, very clear. I, I, I think the, the, the. I guess the beauty of what this could do is, um. I, I, I always like the word incentives, uh, even in, in small projects. Uh, let's say that, that, that they could be. Um, uh, special, um, um, benefits of protecting a tree of a certain canopy or a certain caliber, even on. On, on, on land, right? Whether this goes there or not, but, but the incentive of, of maybe adjusting your, your building or, or. Or, or the houses that Chuck was saying, maybe adjusting the plan to try to protect as much as possible of the lot instead of clear cutting. There are incentives that, that would benefit the project and the town. I think that, that, that's all good. I, I, overall, I think. I, I would love if, if there would be a magical way to, to make this be. A bylaw that is, that, that promotes. The, the right type of development, but through the doing that incentivize the increase, the increasing. The footprint of, of, of trees that we have in the town over time. Uh, so like, like you said, Anna, it may, maybe there's, there's a place where, and, and buildings typically, especially larger buildings. The, the more compact they are, the more efficient the, the, they, they, they become. Uh, and, and so there's a place where that building is going to be located where obviously you're gonna have to remove all those trees. So what do you do then? And, and, and if, 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 if there, there's a mechanism, mechanism of replacing. Those in the site, now tier one, let's say, ideal. Uh, and replace them with more than those that were there, which in some cases we have, I guess the example is five O one. Um, that, that Margie mentions is a good one because that project was permitted. And, and it was basically a material dump before. And what, what is permitted is gonna end up with more trees than where they're at the beginning. Uh, and, and the, 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 the objective is that it doesn't have to be there. That could be ideal if it's in C two. But if, if, if there could be a replacement to a fund or simply by putting, having areas of the town where people can, can, can. Plant the trees that they're cutting somewhere else, as long as we are increasing all the time our population of trees, I think probably is a positive. Uh, route.
I'd like to respond to that.
Go ahead.
Um, I wanna point out that. Incentives and offsets are high on our list of things that we want to incorporate. And Sam is actually working. On that right now, that aspect. Um, there are a couple towns in the vicinity that have what they call a green score. That, um, give credits for various things that would other, that. Can offset the loss of the tree and still contribute to, um, reducing emissions, emissions, for example. So, um, definitely wanna do that.
Okay, so that sounds like a really helpful thing that we wanna explore further in the future, kind of what incentives mean. And I'll, I'll add to that. I really liked. Marcelo's point about like tiers of replacement, like, so tier one might be. Like, if you think about it, the ideal scenario is no trees are cut down and you somehow magically develop between them. Right? And that should be super easy. Like, that should be like a permit that we basically. We will do, we will create incentives. You can build density, you can, you can do crazy stuff. Because you're protecting every tree on that property, you're gonna get a gold star, right? Then there's like the second tier, which is. You have to cut some trees down, but you're more than happy to plant the same amount, same type on property. Yay. So you're like. Not quite the gold star, but like close, right? And maybe, maybe there is an incentive because we, we allow more parking or. Less parking or, I don't know, something. And then there's like tier three, which is, oh my God, you're gonna cut down every tree on that property. But you're gonna stick a bunch of trees somewhere else or you're gonna put it into a tree fund. And maybe we have like some area in town that's public land where you're gonna agree to plant some trees and. That level might have the least incentive, right? Because we don't really need to incentivize that. That's like an easy way out. You're just kind of. Moving your money somewhere. Um, so is that what you have in mind, Marcelo, or am I completely off?
Well, something like that. I mean, you just created a, 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 a great picture for it, I, I think. But, but, but I, I, I would say that that would extend even beyond. There is incentives on the municipal front. Um, uh, but actually not, uh, let me re- withdraw and rephrase that. On the municipal front, I think it should be a, a very strict. Uh, requirement. So the town leads on, on how we can, we can e- expand that. But then you start getting into scenic roads, for example. Where I see an argument there, which I think is used now. I mean, we've been talking about a tree on a scenic road for a long time, right? Um, the, the, in those cases, there are certain trees that the tree itself is precious. Um. But in particular in scenic roads, I think we've, we've heard that. But there may be others in other places. That, that are kind of not necessarily in develop, in part of what the town or, or what an owner needs to develop. I, I, there would be cases like that. So maybe the bylaw needs to consider that as well. Uh, and then there's the, the, the ultimate tier of the larger projects and those are the most difficult ones. But, but I, in principle, I agree with the way you said it. In that case, there will be, um, um, fewer incentives if, if there's not an effort to, to do that, but still. The requirement to end up with, uh, uh, an equal plus amount of trees. Either there or somewhere.
Kate, Deepa, do you have thoughts on this? This, this, the, the onion tier system kind of resonate? Do you, do you like it?
I think so. And I feel like, uh. The big picture is how is this gonna support that net zero initiative, right? What is it that? One is to preserve trees, but what is going to help us to get to that net zero, which is what our final goal is. During this journey of these twenty five years. What is that ratio that we need to make sure that we reach that effective net zero, right? There's like calculations out there. Like one ton of carbon dioxide is equal to that many trees. So there is that ratio and math out there that we probably should also keep in mind when we're talking about. The replacement quantities because you can bring down a twenty five year old tree and plant something that's like absolutely the canopy is like. One fourth of what it was there. It's not really, its quantity is apples to apples, but at the same time, it's not really the same thing. So, uh, I think the, a lot of these categories have a very. A tiers within themselves. So I think we, one is to look at the big picture, but also go into each of these categories to look at that. Tier items and especially the replacement requirements, I think, has to be well flushed out because. That's as important for that net zero initiative as much as. Trying to avoid the clear cutting that we are trying to do. I think it's, for me, that feels like. Much more a stronger weapon, like the scenic road that you said, we have brought down one tree and it's been two years. We've never had a chance to. Put back that tree or put equivalent of that, right? Because it's on a private property, it just didn't happen. So. Um, everything, every tree car is important and it's critical. That was a one important one as well. So, um. Um, this is a very serious topic. It's got a lot of information. Kudos to the team. You've got a very good list here for sure.
But as far as like the incentive, because I think that's a really important point, does that resonate with you, Deepa, Kate? And I definitely wanna hear from the sustainability folks as well. But if we can reach some consensus that we like. The idea of incentives based on tiers of tree cutting, that's a helpful input for the sustainability folks. So. Kate, are you, are you there as well?
I, I like the idea of tiers and I like, um, I think definitely Deepa's grounding it in that carbon, carbon offset. Climate change, people are becoming more familiar and that's, we did support that as a community. And I think. Um, that goes along with, you know, it's a different world now than four years ago when you guys are working on it. So we don't. We, we can be open to other things. My concern about that. Um, is the way we were initially just talking about it is that we're talking also zoning changes. And that's a whole other animal, which as you know, is one of the reasons I signed up to be on the planning board. So I'm not afraid of that work. But what I, I, I think we have to try to get something for spring town meeting. And so. Working the tiers with incentives, when it's gonna involve density, I, I don't know how that can happen for spring. So. I would caution us to try to figure out how to separate them a little bit. So there can be something. Brought to the public with the public for town meetings, right?
Fair enough. So you're concerned that once we kind of have the tier systems, it may require some complex zoning changes and difficult to pull off. Um. Okay, I, I, I saw the, the. Okay, I saw the sustainability folks nodding, like Matt, is there something, is this helpful to you guys as far as input for incentives? If one of you, I think I heard Margie say someone is working on something relating to incentives, can this assist you in that? What you've heard so far from us?
Sorry. Samantha's working on incentives.
Samantha, is this helpful as far as input?
Very helpful. What I have been looking at was sort of other ways that they could offset carbon. So if they never need to put in trees, but then they install solar panels, or in speaking back at a conference, who's saying that meadows are very important to our natural wildlife, regional wildlife, we're putting in a meadow of a stretch. And if you've got it figuring out what is equivalent, like you guys are talking about with your incentives, it's the freedom. There's been too many, the full roof of solar equivalent to cutting down all that trees. So I'm trying to figure that out. So this is very helpful.
And I don't know about you guys, I have kind of a hard time hearing Samantha, but I can tell you we're approaching the one hour mark in this discussion. And so I wanted to kind of try to walk away with kind of the next step. And what I'm hearing is that this kind of idea of incentives, meaning the more trees you have to cut to do your project, the less we need to give you incentives, meaning the less flexible we're going to be in our permitting, right? That concept combined with Samantha talking to Becca and developing some ideas around that, what are your thoughts, sustainability folks, for coming back with maybe a memo or some high-level points from Becca and Samantha as to what that might look like? Hey, this kind of, you know, this kind of tree cutting, that's kind of like the magical ideal version I mentioned, where, you know, you just happen to build right around every tree. And so we're going to be super flexible in our permitting, right? And like, walk us through each layer, each tier, and what some of these ideas might be of incentives, right? Flexibility that you're willing to give at each level.
Anna, can I add one last thought? Just to kind of wrap up, I think, and clearly, even in this bullet list point, and the first, the topics to be considered on this document, the incentives and offsets are there. So I think a lot of the ideas that we discuss are in this bullet list, which is great. I think maybe what we can try to develop as a part of the conversation is create, make this list, start working on some type of system, understandable and logical system, whether it's a gradient of tiers or something else. It really doesn't matter, as long as it's not arbitrary and disconnected. And I think a lot of these bullet list points here are part of that ecosystem. If we can start kind of making it work towards maybe around what Kate was saying, with a baseline that has some math to it, but also with the zoning part. I think a lot of the meat is here in this document, which is a good point of departure.
And Chuck, you've got your hand raised. Did you want to add something?
I just want to say gratitude to the planning board folks. I think this has been really a helpful discussion. And I think you've given us some things to work with. So thank you.
Okay. And then, yep, go ahead, Margie.
Talking about next steps and going forward, I'm wondering how often we will meet with the planning board. And I have some other questions, but let's start with that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I think our next task here as we wrap up the hour is to come up with a work plan, if you will. And, I mean, obviously, the planning board has to consider this and our availability. And Trish is not here as chair, and I think we should obviously check in with her as well. But, you know, my thought, my suggestion to the planning board is that we, if sustainability is available, that we allow a 20, 30-minute discussion, you know, regularly at our meetings for this, so that we have a working, continued working movement on this. Is that something that resonates with folks, so that we're not having hours and hours every time, but maybe 20, 30 minutes a meeting, so that we can make progress and move this along?
I have no problem with that, as long as the agenda allows, for sure. The more we discuss, the quicker we will make progress.
The only thing I would ask if that works for the sustainability folks is maybe the sustainability folks could come up with, I would trust them to, they've been working very closely with these topics that they have outlined for us. So they probably know what is kind of challenging and controversial versus the easy stuff. And maybe they can kind of organize it as a, what's it called, a projected work plan for us and get that over to Peter and Tricia, our chair. And then we can kind of break it apart and fit it in, right? So I would suggest getting some easy stuff out of the way so that we get some momentum and get to know each other a little bit, and then, you know, get into the nitty-gritty, challenging things. Does that sound doable to Margie and the team?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I think a lot of the things on the list are, few things on the list are easy.
For sure.
Is, can we identify, is there, we need some resources that can help with some of the more technical things and these questions about when we might inadvertently move over into the zoning realm and not want to do that. Is planning board and planning department able to advise on that?
Margie, I'm always happy and free to help talk and work with you on this bylaw.
We're not, I don't think we're saying that we never want to talk about zoning, right? I think Kate is just saying we have to be thoughtful about it, not that it's not allowed to go there. Right, Kate?
Yeah, I think when we get into density incentives, though, it's going to get quickly wrapped up in that tier. So I can see to get, I mean, I would say try for spring, and I think one way would be, we have four tiers, but we're holding off on implementing the fourth tier, right? But you can still pass the bylaw, I think, probably. You can check with town council, flush it out, but.
Okay, one question on that. I don't know what your thought is. But one of the key things, and I think we discussed this before, I think for this to be successful, as we kind of condense it into a more intelligible system of parts, I think, how can we somehow advertise this and make sure that everybody in the community knows that this is taking place and start participating? Because if there's no clear community input here, it's not going to pass. I'm concerned about that.
That was one of my goals for tonight that we didn't get to before the time ran out, is to develop a community outreach plan. I think that's critical that we do that. And also, well, I'll leave the rest for later.
So one of the beauty of our agendas, right, is they're, I think, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, pretty regularly, the town posts on the website, on Instagram, hey, planning board meeting coming up. And perhaps we could add, hey, the tree bylaw is being discussed. And we have, you know, it's going to be a topic for the upcoming 10, you know, planning board meetings. And we start to put that out there so that the public is aware that we're having this. And, you know, everyone in the sustainability committee on the planning board can spread the word. And that way, we start to generate some energy around this continued working discussion.
That is true. Obviously, our meetings are via, or posted on Facebook. And obviously, Margie, there's many ways to run a Facebook or social media campaign to be interested in bylaws and stuff, you know, in really trees of that matter. At first, just want to state that, obviously, we're talking about pretty complex bylaws right now. And I think a good bylaw sometimes can also be a simple bylaw. So I think I just want to reiterate, I think it makes sense that we all go back after tonight's meeting and actually read what was proposed, which was sent out. And I'm happy to resend it tomorrow, just to everyone kind of get their eyes on it. But also, just to take a look at what other communities have regarding tree bylaws. Because, you know, a tree bylaw, we're not, we're not creating the first tree of the bylaw ever in the state of Massachusetts. We are joining the cause, right, to save trees. And obviously, in the fight against climate change, we'll say. But just going to want to say, you know, let's take a look at what other towns have had and what works for them, because that may be a good format, right, indoor template to use moving forward. Excuse me, Matt, I see your other hand.
And Peter, to that point, can you help us with that? Like, at the next meeting, could we have some examples of that so that we have context for the draft versus what other communities have done?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Peter, yeah, could you elaborate? Because I have, we didn't get to it tonight, but I have a list of the definition of protected trees for all bylaws or ordinances and to what realm they apply. So are there other things that should be included, or is that mainly it?
Are you talking about the size of the tree?
Yes.
So that's a great point. That's a great topic, right? And I think we all have to come together and, you know, have a consensus. Obviously, tonight, we're on Zoom. However, at the last planning board meeting, which we had so difficult because we ran late, I think the planning board remembers, I had actually cut out cardboard samples of diameter, right, to show what is a tree diameter, right? And so I can tell you right now, our tree, our bylaws, our definition, call for a six-inch tree as a major tree. Now, I can tell you right now, industry standards has an eight-inch tree at breast diameter height in an urban environment as a tree that is of a major, right? And then a 10-inch tree in a forested environment is considered a major tree, right? So I think, you know, just to talk about, I think that both committees need to come down to a consensus on what is a major tree or what isn't a major tree. And that's just one example that we have to work together on. And that's the reason why I made those cardboard pancake diameter examples.
So what I want to know is, when you say, let's look at what other communities have done, what should be on that list? What topics should be on that list besides the size of the tree?
The size of the tree. I think
What else?
The payment in lieu of, right?
Can I, can I offer just one thought? And I know that I think Matt wants to talk as well. But I, definitely, getting examples of what other communities have done is important. And I think it's kind of, it's going to help us speed up the process. But I think before we get into the details of how they selected this type of tree or that type of tree, I think would be great to have like a little, like a little table where we see how the overall philosophy of this town is different from the other one in terms of implementation, in terms of public, private, or what have you, have the big picture ideas and see, okay, in Wellesley, that that community considers this part of the bylaw, the key kind of, the key enforcement part that is critical. In Concord, they don't do like that. Or what community that is really similar, like more of our income level and our type of economic activity, what is important to them? And maybe we can start comparing and see which one is more similar to us.
So we've kind of started a little graph. Excuse me, Matt, you had your hand up. I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I think, go ahead. And I had something relating to the outreach. So it's kind of jumping to another topic. But I think you were going to say that you've done some comparison already.
We've done some comparisons already. Obviously, size of the tree was a big one, payment in lieu of. We really haven't looked at incentives and offsets. But I think other elements that you have to take in consideration are home value, average, even their average, you know, average home value, average median income, lot size. Those are all elements that you have to take into consideration, because you just can't, you can't take from another community, they're just fit Ashland, right? You have to mold it, say, yeah, this fit Ashland for these reasons, one, two, and three. And we don't, we can take some of their principles and apply them, but obviously, we have to make it our own. And, you know, in Marcelo, you take the town of Wellesley, right? The town of Wellesley has a home, median home value as well, one-fourth. I believe it's a little over a million dollars. I think it's around 1.3, 1.4, right?
Absolutely.
The toll in Ashland is about, between, I believe it's around $500,000. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And that's why I made that point, because and their density is different. If you go to a density of affluent town with a very little density, or they have a lot more green area than we do. So that all applies, absolutely.
But can I, can I just kind of counter that? Because for me, it's also about equity. So just because Wellesley is rich, doesn't mean they get to have all the trees. Like, I don't know how to be more direct on this point. Like, one of the reasons I live here is Ashland is green and beautiful. And just because we have more density or we're not as rich, doesn't mean all of our trees should be under attack by development. So I'm uncomfortable with this idea that we should not be comparing ourselves to those who have more ability to protect their development or protect themselves from cutting trees. I think it's an equity issue. I think our community is becoming more and more diverse, and people who are moving here are of all kinds of backgrounds, race, class, gender, and they deserve beautiful green trees, just like Wellesley. So I really want to counter this idea that we cannot be like Wellesley. We can be like whatever we want to be. We, the people of Ashland, get to decide what is important for us. And if we feel like we want a green, protected environment, we need to develop for that. We don't have to keep being dense. We can be different. And there's a way to build severe density with a lot of trees. I can tell you, I grew up in a very urban environment, not in a more of a European environment. And I lived in a high-riser, you know, high-rise apartment building that was extremely dense, but in the middle of it was a beautiful green space. And so there is a way to build dense and green together. You don't have to be just like Wellesley, but you can protect trees just like Wellesley. I'll just add one thing about outreach. You know, I think we've already done some outreach. You know, the survey that we sent out, we had about 270 responses. So there was high interest in it. So that's kind of helped us to hone in on some of the things like why we're not necessarily targeting individual lots. We're doing larger, larger projects. You know, a lot of that comes from the feedback. So if you, there's a PowerPoint that has those results if you're interested. But I feel like we've kind of started with feedback and community input. So that's helping to inform this. So hopefully, you know, we can bring people along at key points, but we've already kind of set the foundation that we're listening to the community on it.
So I think we're now past the one hour mark. To summarize, it sounds like we have some consensus on the applicability of this to public space, the importance of a work plan and continued effort between the planning board and sustainability and coming up with a schedule, if you will, and trying to spread the word so that the public is aware of our schedule. Maybe sharing that work plan, if you will. And then the importance of incentives and kind of a tier system. And having Samantha, it sounds like Samantha is doing some work on that and maybe coming to us with the results. And also Peter's input on other communities, including income and all of those details, so that we can have a chart, if you will, that compares all the different communities, and we can have a deeper dive discussion, some of which I'm sure is very different from the views I've shared. So does that sound good as far as the next steps, so we can wrap up tonight's discussion? I see the folks nodding. And with that, we can move forward to the next topic. Thank you so much, Margie and the Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Samantha.
And the next item on our agenda is the public hearing for 949 Homer Avenue, site plan and special permit application. And Peter, as I understand, the applicant has requested a public hearing continuance to September 14, 2023. Do you want to speak to that?
Yep, I'm going to pull that up on my screen. I'll share. Where, can I, this is the continuance that came in for 949 Homer Street. I know at the last meeting, we had discussion about when we were going to continue this too, and if the applicant had the availability to get what needs to be done. With that said, the applicant, after consulting, after the meeting, in consulting with his architect, Mr. Ron Ford, and the civil engineer, Mr. Rick Salvo, the attorney, Terry Morris, contacting me and obviously Um, contacting me and obviously stated that he needed to request a continuance. They had some end of the summer vacation, planned vacations happening and taking place. So therefore, they didn't feel comfortable to uh bring something back to the planning board tonight. Um, and then with that said, um at the end of the last meeting, um, Tricia, Kendra, Sarah, and Marcelo worked on um some comments for the design review committee. Those were actually shared with the applicant. So therefore, the applicant's gonna put together a package to go back to the design review committee. Uh, and so here they uh are planning to go back to the design review, hopefully on September twenty first. And then they will reappear in front of the planning board on September twenty eighth. So they're looking for a continuance to September twenty eighth. And please note that they're looking to extend um, the planning board's time to rule on this matter to October fifteenth. So at that point, uh, this is what the continuing will be in the question.
Does anyone have any questions or is prepared to make a motion?
Um, I have I have a question. So the last um the GCG report, the last meeting, right at the meeting or right before, so it wasn't really discussed, they had um the responses that go to GCG. So that's usually a round or two back and forth that happens um. You know, they facilitated, I think Peter sort of involved. One of the things was they said um the consultant, our third-party consultant, recommended a traffic study. And the response from the applicant was, we're working with the planning board on it. Now, I I sent to Peter that I do not recall a discussion that meeting, and my concern was um, over timing. If they come and they discuss it with us and we say, you have to get a traffic study, the traffic study then goes to third-party review. I've usually seen that a couple rounds. What does that do to the schedule? So I I think we have to be cognizant of that. I know that I believe Peter had talked to the applicant about it, but that if they're coming back September twenty eighth with a traffic study that hasn't been reviewed yet and that October fifteenth, I I do still have concerns about the deadline.
Um, just to reply to that, Kate, so um, I did take your email and I did a conversation with the applicant. Um, and they did, but they do obviously do believe that is important. So they do believe that they're, I believe right now, they're gonna come back with some information on that. I think when I, I when I talked to our GCG Mike Carter about this, their really initial comment was regarding the visual, the um excuse me, your visual um the visual sightline coming in and out of that driveway. So I think that's the main point that GCG was trying to get across. Uh, but hopefully, the applicant will come back. I think, I mean, we've been working with this applicant, and I believe that um they have been uh respectfully, obviously, collecting continuances, not, you know, an extension to work with the planning board. And and I don't think the planning board, and and I think they will continue to do that. Uh and so I I do, I understand your point regarding timeframe. However, um, we are um almost, you know, a little shy of a year on this application. So I think they're gonna continue to be cooperative with planning. And and I do know that they were gonna try to have, take a look at that for the next meeting. And any updates I get regarding traffic and in and out, I I'm happy to share with everybody, obviously, first and foremost.
And is there further questions, um, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the nine to forty-nine Homer Street project till the September twenty eighth planning board meeting.
On second.
And a roll call vote? Manita's Manitski, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine, Jersey, aye.
And that passes. Um, the next item on our agenda is the reports on planning topics. Peter, you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, uh, I just wanna, I can walk everyone through this one. So reports on the planning topics, I explained, you know, uh, I'm gonna stop, stop sharing my screen. Uh, excuse me. So looking at my notes, um, I know going back to scenic roads, we've been, we've been long talking about scenic roads, scenic outreach. Anna, you worked with um Alvaro uh together, you know, language regarding a uh a postcard out. And so I just wanted to update, uh, work with the DPW. We have, we have a list of of uh all residents that live on scenic roads. Now, a couple of condominium complexes were on that list. Uh, but I can tell you right now, we have over eight hundred and thirty, well, we have eight hundred and thirty-five of partners on our scenic roads. So we plan to do a mailing of a postcard um at fifty-one cents per postcard. That's gonna cost about four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so we have mailed, uh, we have not, we just wanted to give that estimate to the planning board. Uh, but I think it's appropriate to move forward with that element. Um, and so since we do have this list, we will be doing hopefully a mail merge. Uh, and uh being able to print out postcards for everybody. So hopefully, at the next uh meeting and new upcoming meeting, we can wrap up that text regarding um of language uh regarding the scenic bylaws um and or the scenic ways, uh, so we can kind of check this uh item off of our list.
Can I ask about that, Peter? I I thought we had the postcard already finalized and
So if it's already finalized, we're just gonna use that then?
Yeah, I thought we did that at a prior meeting. Another thought I had is, I think you know, I don't know what the planning board thinks about this, but like, I live in a condo community. I don't think I'm on a scenic route, but I live in a condo community and condos communities tend to have boards that release newsletters to all of their residents regularly. And I wonder if we can save some money to the town and rather than having hundreds of postcards go out that, in my opinion, don't always get seen. We reach out to the condo associations and have them put it into their newsletter, just for, rather than a postcard. But I don't know what, I don't want to miss a chance to get individual residents a postcard. I'm just kind of throwing it out there that if that's a significance cost savings, we should think about it.
I'm happy to discuss it. It's, you know, I can take a look at how many committee, uh, I would have to take a look to pay the tooth, Anna, to see how many um how many of the abundants are actually within the condo development, which is actually pretty easy because you're just looking for a couple streets. Uh, but obviously, I know Elliot Street is a scenic road. So I know Spyglass Hill and or in in your, in, you know, for example, Spyglass Hill would be triggered. Um, Cedar Street is a is a is a scenic road. So in that instance, you know, working with Circle, another big condo developer.
I mean, that's hundreds of people. And so I think that's gonna save us some good, good money. And you know, I think where we can't find money to plant a tree, we we may want to be thoughtful about spending money on a postcard when we can really spread that news through the condo association newsletters much more efficiently, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if every resident in the condo building really needs that, because what's being taken care is like the property office or the office of that condo building. That's what needs to be notified to make sure that they can pass it on. I don't know if the plan was really to send to every individual family in a condo complex. That doesn't make sense, because they are not going around cutting trees. Yeah, so I hope the eight hundred that you said Peter is not really having individual condo families accounted for.
Well, we can take a look at that. It's 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 just
It's a very bad scenario.
Yeah, trust me, the last thing that we want to do is print up eight hundred.
Um, yeah, I I can tell you, I I can barely like put a plant on my porch without getting someone complaining about it. So I can assure you, condo folks can't really cut anything. Um, so I I would definitely look into that and and it it's a very effective way to communicate with condo uh, communities, in my opinion.
Okay. Uh, moving on, I would just want to reiterate, uh, item number D, the MBTA communities. On September fourteenth, we will be joined by the select board um, to discuss the MBTA communities in resorting in the direction we want to go and the priorities of the town. And so if anybody has any topics regarding MBTA communities that they want to send in, um, please let me know, and I can add them to the agenda. Or if there's any information I can get to everybody uh regarding MBTA communities. I'll probably dust up a memo that I did to the planning board a couple, couple months ago, maybe a couple weeks ago. Um, and I'll resend that out leading up to the meeting on the fourteenth. Uh, but that would conclude any uh, any updates I have on the reports.
Great. And now we move to the reports from board members and town planner. And we begin with the comprehensive plan. Kate, do you want to do an update?
Um, sure, we we had a meeting last month, so right now it's just once a month, I I think, depending on work plan. The September meeting is September twenty first. That will be the first introduction of the consultant. So I've been personally lobbying and asked other people to um, their community resources that we're we're reaching out to. Um, I think it would be helpful to have a warm welcome of the consultant and show the engaged community. I think that's gonna help push the whole process forward when, when they see that there are people willing, able, and interested in willing to lend a hand on the, on the project.
Thank you, Kate. And then the next item is the Design Review Committee nine forty-nine Homer Street item. And Peter, can you update us us on that?
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to make a brief note that everyone obviously received that um, that review that um Tricia and Marcelo put together. Um, and that went back, uh, and I think Tricia and Marcelo's um comments were highlighting the grain, if I am correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and I just wanted to make a note that those went back out to the applicant as well as to the design review committee. Um, and uh, just to say that, obviously, that task was completed, and it was circulated out to all parties.
Any questions or comments on that from the planning board?
I would just say, as a as a matter of a summary, I think what we tried, I hopefully you guys saw it uh that way. What we tried to do is to kind of uh uh have have a um a a real uh grouping of the different type of topics, those that do not apply to that review based on 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 what we um, asked them to see those that they are recommending, uh, and and trying to set up um um, kind of a a a more, a more systematic way of doing this review based on what the bylaw says for 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 the guidelines of of the sound review. Uh, so so there, hopefully, I think um, these provided some clarity on narrow the topics that are critical to that project to be reviewed by the design review committee, uh, so that we can get their recommendations and and bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Marcelo, for and Tricia for getting that done. And um anything else on this topic before we move on to the rest? Peter, I think the other two topics in this category, Sustainability Committee and CPC, usually Tricia comments on, so I think we've covered this area.
That's correct, yeah.
And that brings us to administrative matters, and we begin with the associate member update, Peter.
Uh, so just to give everyone an update, this is gonna close on uh August thirty first, and then we'll kind of move, then we'll move forward. Um, we ha- I I was exchanging emails with one person that was interested, but he, I do not know if they fill out a talent bank form. And I believe we have received, I think, uh, one other talent bank form for the position.
So how how many total applicants do we have?
I believe at this point, we have two.
Okay. Um, and so presumably, at our next meeting, we might be discussing the applicants so that we can present our recommendations to the select board. Is that right?
Uh, we can do that, yep. And and also, this appointment's gonna be a joint appointment from the select board and the planning board.
Got it.
I was gonna bring that up. Is there any way, um I don't think we need to rush it, but on the fourteenth, I I believe that's our planning board meeting and the select board will be there for a joint meeting on MBTA communities. So is that at all practical to add that to that meeting?
I think it would be practical, you know, I think depending on the number of applicants we get, if it stays at two, um, then I think, yeah, we can probably put it on that again. But uh, obviously, we have a couple more days until it's open. Obviously, we'll make that decision leading up to that meeting. But I I would agree, Kate, that it would make sense just to put it on the agenda if everyone's gonna be in the same room then.
And that brings us to the planning office updates.
Um So I can tell you, there hasn't been much movement on Whitmore Estates. Uh, we've been back and forth with their attorney to try to iron out what needs to be done from a contractual standpoint. And so I think at this point, uh, I would have to touch base with uh our town council, um Brian Winters, who's been kind of spearheading the effort. Uh, and then also our conservation agent, who's been dealing with the uh stormwater uh issues. But uh, no construction has happened, uh, because number one, um the contract that they provided for us to review did not uh, did not take care of all the elements that we had concerned over. And so there was still discussion going on between the two attorneys, and that's where I would, uh, that's the update I think with the board at this point.
And Peter, the, I I, I'm sorry, Kate.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, on 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 that process, I I seem to remember there was a forty-five day limit to to that. And uh, where are we on that timeline?
The forty-five day limit has expired, and we, if we decide to town, we can move forward uh and take that bond. I believe, because we are still in conversations with the applicant, the owner, the developer, regarding the work that needs to be done. I think at this point, we are trying to continue to have conversations with them uh to see if they can still maintain the responsibility to get that work done. Uh, but we need to make sure it's going to be done with that from a standpoint to 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 town specifications. Um, if that breaks down, I think then that's the next step to town complete. Um, and and I'm leaning, I'm leaning on town council to 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 make that judgment call.
Kate, did you have a question?
That that was um more more or less my issue and more or less satisfactory answer.
Okay. Peter, you want to walk through the rest of the planning office?
A hundred to uh, hundred to one thirty, Chestnut Street continues construction. I think everyone may have driven by that at this point. However, um, they're still pouring, they're pouring foundation walls and and puddings. Uh, they built a retaining wall, um, and so on the Queen Isabella side. Um, and so work constru- continues to progress, and uh, that's a project that um is continuing to kind of move along slowly. Um, the rain has to help any of the projects out here in Ashland and or elsewhere. Uh, but uh, but uh, that project is 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 stable and it's moving forward, and and that's what I can say. Uh, five oh one Pond Street, uh, there's really no update on that project, uh, besides the um our conservation is commissioned, and and our conservation agent have have been out there to do some inspections. I've been out there a couple times, um, and the conservation, uh, I believe had some enforcement orders uh regarding some stormwater runoff uh caused by one of those heavy downpours um, a couple, you know, one or two weeks ago. So that's the biggest update I can give on that project. Three ninety-nine Ponce, excuse me, three ninety-nine Eden Street, um, is uh the Starbucks project. So at this point, they have jackhammered into a whole rammed out the old foundation for the um Walgreens Pharmacy, and it looks like they uh compacted in that old foundation. And so at this point, I believe they are looking to start the installation of the underground utilities and the um the the development of the new pad foundation site. Uh, and so, uh, but the, obviously, the demolition has been complete. Uh, and uh, it it just continues, that that project also just continues to move along. If you have any questions?
I'll just add that, and my my daughter has expressed interest in working there when it opens. So very random news on that, just to get you all to laugh a little bit.
Perfect.
Excellent. So let them know. When they're ready, she'll apply.
I'll pass the word on.
There's a lot of excitement in the teenage community uh of my daughter's friends about the Starbucks.
And I, you know, it's, there's, but it's from what I understand, people are waiting a long time in Ashland for Starbucks. So I think it's exciting. Uh, and that quarter is really gonna be nice, I think. Uh, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of energy around that corner. And I think it's really kind of a satellite hub to the to the downtown.
Peter, has there been any update on the mural component of that project?
I know Beth and Michael were working on that with our cha- with our uh council, excuse me, our cultural council. Um, but uh, Beth, you know, we're all deal, we're all using some vacation time right now at Town Hall, so I haven't updated that. I could update you maybe on the fourteenth.
Great.
That's acceptable. Uh, Quill Pond Street, uh, continue to work with uh Mast DOT and our DPW on the sidewalk installation. I know uh Mast DOT is still out. I know, uh, Mass DOT is still out in that area, uh, finishing up the roadway. Um, and that continues to move along. Um, however, um, I, I need to get myself an update on that project. It's been a little bit of time, but obviously that project's not complete without that sidewalk on the two side roads and obviously on Long Pond Street. And that will include any plans that haven't been, uh, started yet. And then the last but not least is ten to sixty Main Street, uh, the planning board and, and the select board. With the select board, we received an email last week from Michael Herbert, our town manager. And I just wanted to inform everybody that I have received a withdrawal letter, um, which will be on the planning board's continuing, uh, excuse me, agenda on September fourteenth. And so it seems like that project is going to explore other curving avenues. Um, and, uh, and, and I think that's, there's a couple, I think I, you know, a couple of reasons for that. I think number one, the project that was proposed, um, two years ago, you know, that people were working on for four years, um, is not feasible at this time, um, regarding construction costs and labor and everything that has happened in the last four years. And so I think that's one of the major reasons is that the project that was in front of the planning board was, um, not, it, it was not financeable for lack of better terms, uh, from a construction standpoint. So that's what I gathered, uh, through conversations. Uh, and I'll just let that withdrawal stand on its own. However, this will be the item on our next agenda on the fourteenth. Um, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that because I know it's not really on our agenda, but I just wanted to give everyone, shed some light to, to all planning board members on without, you know, conversations I've had.
Sounds like it'll be something we can discuss at the next meeting in greater detail.
Yes.
And as far as applications received, anything on that, Peter?
No, we have no new applications. And so I think we'll be busy this fall talking about MBTA community and pre-buy law. Uh, and obviously the comprehensive plan, which is a huge, uh, huge element that obviously I'm part of and Kate and Anna, you're part of as well. So I think that will give us some time after, uh, I guess, say, forty years of permitting. Uh, we can start to do some, uh, some greater planning work, um, after, you know, even though we've done a lot of great planning work, um, with the, with the housing construction plan and the ADA communities and, uh, but this is obviously a pump plan, it's a once in every ten, fifteen, twenty-year, uh, situation.
Great. And that leaves us with no minutes, right? Nothing to go over?
There were minutes from June ninth, June twenty-ninth, I'm sorry.
I noticed they're not, they're not on the amended agenda for tonight.
The agenda though, yesterday, I'm sorry, because Kate, uh, emailed me. I did email the minutes out. I, if we don't wanna take these up tonight, um, I plan just to post them tomorrow as a draft just so we can kind of do that. Um, and then obviously we can approve them and review them in detail in the next meeting.
I mean, we can definitely do them tonight as long as they're on tonight's agenda. I just, the email I opened was from yesterday. So if they are on the agenda, we can certainly do that now.
I amended it at the end of the day yesterday.
Okay.
Brought up to my attention.
Um, I just need to find them. Have other folks had a chance to review them? The June twenty-ninth minutes?
Do you want me to bring them up and share them?
Sure.
Then like I said, if we don't feel comfortable doing them, I'm happy just to.
No, as long as they're on the agenda, let's, let's move, let's do it. Um, I, I did just find them. So, uh, Peter, this, this kind of yellow section, Sean's comments were inaudible due to horrible echo at the podium. Is that kind of, kind of standard to have in our minutes?
Uh, you know what, I'm gonna go back and.
I mean, it, it adds a lot of, a lot of, uh, flavor to the, the visual is really unique.
You know, Anna, let me go back. If, if the planning board's acceptable, let me go back and try to read, do, uh, let me look at the, 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 um, let me go back and look at the tape and I can try to fill in that one.
I mean, I kind of like horrible echo in the minutes. It gives it something different. Um, so it sounds like you're gonna take another stab at it before we address the minutes?
Yeah, why don't I do that? I think obviously it wasn't on the, the agenda from the get-go. I put it on there last night because it, but I, because I, the way I missed it. So why don't I go back through and, and take a stab at fixing those issues? And then, um, I'll post the draft though, so we can stay compliant.
So it sounds like we've made it through tonight's agenda. Um, it's now eight fifty-six and is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a mo, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I don't think we need, or do a roll call, right, Peter? So everyone is in agreement and I think we almost had the shortest meeting ever, um, almost an hour and a half. I hope you all have a lovely evening. I don't know what I'm gonna do with myself until ten thirty. Um, no idea.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Bye.